So, welcome to the town of Norfolk Planning Board meeting February 25th, 2021. I must read a statement here in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, 38 subsection 20 relating to the 2020 Novell coronavirus outbreak emergency that February 25th, 2021 7pm public meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be done via Zoom online video conferencing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during allocated windows to join. Follow the web link or call the dial-in number listed in the invitation under the start time called order. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. For more information on getting connected and using the video conference, there is a link on the invitation. The Zoom number for those of you who may be listening but can't get in is 9266999773. And with that, Rich, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Walter. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to be presenting presentation on the wastewater master plan study thus far for Norfolk Town Center. The town hired the engineering firm Woodward and Kern. We have two representatives for Woodward and Kern tonight with Rosemary Blackyer and Olivia LaFonte, who will be making a presentation this evening. And what were you, the intended sequence for tonight is we'll have the, we'll go through the presentation. And then, once the presentation is over, we'll have a Q and A at the end. And we can, we can go back to different slides if need be for people to just recap some of the information that will be presented tonight. I'm going to start the presentation. All right, again, so just a quick overview of the agenda. We touched on introductions. So we'll go over work completed to date to propose sewer district flow and conceptual wastewater system outreach. We had a property owner meeting on February 11th virtually. That was attended by a few of the property owners. We'll talk about that meeting, funding sources, and we'll talk about next steps. As I mentioned earlier, the wastewater master plan study was funded through a housing choice community capital grant. The total grant award was $224,000. I'm gonna kick it over to Olivia to take, take the presentation from here, and then I'll I'll be back in to talk about the outreach effort that we had.
Thanks, Rich. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking the time with us on this Thursday night. As Rich mentioned, I'm Olivia LaFonte with Woodward and Kern, and I'm the project manager for this project. I wanted to begin by quickly summarizing the work we've completed to date as part of this project. So the goal was to develop a plan to provide sewer to the town center. So the town currently owns and operates a wastewater plant. It's locating, located on Meeting House Road at the top of the hill. And this plant was originally designed and constructed by a developer, but was later acquired by the town. So before we started looking into ways to provide new treatment options to the town center, we wanted to dig a little deeper into the existing system. So with that, we reviewed town records. We performed, you know, multiple site visits as well as a condition assessment of the existing plant. So the plant itself, it's in good working condition and it's currently operating at about, you know, 50% capacity. So the plant was designed for 30,000 gallons per day. But when I say 50% capacity, right now, there's about 15,000 gallons per day flowing to that plant. And the reasoning for this is there are parcels that are not currently built out that, you know, are planned to flow to that plant. So although there is capacity, the way this plant was designed and, you know, contracts were drawn up, the remaining is currently preserved and not currently available for the town center area. While looking at the existing plant, we also looked into, you know, the alternative of possibly expanding that plant in order to serve town center with sewer. Although the existing plant has some capacity, like I mentioned, that capacity is reserved. And the existing plant itself is basically landlocked. So physically expanding the treatment plant as well as the discharge field, it's not, it's not feasible at this time. We also looked into the option of potentially sending wastewater flows from town center to MCI Norfolk. However, after discussions with their engineering department, they're currently in the process of doing some upgrades to their existing plant and working to get into compliance with their existing plant. So at this time, they weren't interested really in entertaining that option. So after these two options were then put aside, the expansion in MCI Norfolk, we started focusing in on the town center and providing a new treatment facility to serve this area. So with that in mind, throughout the process, we met with various town groups, including town administration, the B1 zoning committee, as well as the towns planning consultant, MAPC. So we worked, you know, hand in hand with the town to develop this as this is, you know, your plan. And we wanted input throughout the whole process as we developed this. So these last couple of bullets here, those those are, you know, going to be the focus of this presentation. But I can just, I guess, summarize, you know, what we've done. We've developed potential, we've developed the potential sewer district. We, you know, put together some flows and loads for the wastewater that would come from those, from this district. And then we evaluated alternatives for the new treatment site. We reviewed, you know, our findings with the town. As Rich had mentioned earlier, we had a meeting with the sewer districts, property owners. And now we're here today to kind of summarize it all and present it to you. So what this slide shows is the proposed sewer district. And again, we went back and forth on this with the town and working with the B1 zoning committee. And this is kind of where we landed. This, this is our proposed sewer district. So what you see here, the parcels in green are parcels that are currently connected to the existing treatment system. So they have wastewater flow that flows to the existing plant. The parcels shown in yellow, those parcels don't currently flow to the plant. However, those are the ones that I mentioned had the reservation fees, reservations flows, excuse me, to the existing plant. So right now, those parcels are basically accounted for with the existing plant. The parcels in blue are the focus of, I guess, this presentation and our project here. Those are the parcels that we're focused on providing sewer for. Also on this map, you can see the red line here, that's the inner B1 district. And then that orangey colored line, that's the outer B1. And then, Rich, if you want to go to the next slide, yeah. So once we developed that district, we then you know, put together flows for these potential for these potential parcels that we'd serve. So focusing in on the blue parcels, we developed potential future sewer build-out flows for each parcel. These flows were developed through coordination with the town as well as the B1 zoning committee, but are still concept level. And assuming this project moves forward, this is what we really would be looking for input for, from the property owners on their future business plans and just input on how they foresee their property developing if sewer were to be provided. So you can see here the different assumptions we made. Some parcels we assumed would build out as fully commercial, some mixed use. And with this, the total was about 22,000 gallons per day. So this is the number that we focused in on for sizing of the new plant. If you want to go to the next slide, Rich. So approximately 22,000 was the number that we're focusing in on for a new plant. However, when looking at wastewater alternatives, we wanted to develop a solution that could be expandable in the future as, you know, future development arises or even as the existing plant itself meets its end of life. We didn't want to end up in the same predicament that we're in now where we have a plant that we can't expand because we're landlocked or it just, it wasn't planned for expansion. So keeping expandability in mind, we want to design and construct a system that could take those 22,000 gallons per day now, but then again, be expanded in the future. So we kept this in mind when looking at, you know, the different infrastructure, infrastructure, so the pipes, force main, as well as the location for the potential discharge field. Do you want to go to the next slide? So with expandability in mind and knowing there is redevelopment planned in the future for this existing parcel, we looked at the fire station parcel as a place to locate a new plant. So this property is already owned by the town and has plenty of available room for a plant. The topography of this area is also such that flow can be collected from town center and then flow by gravity to this parcel. So what you're seeing here is a just high-level, concept level of what the layout could potentially look like. There'd be a building with some underground tanks as the treatment plant. The coming from the west would be the gravity line that would come into the plant. And then going out of the plant, there would be a force main where the treated wastewater flow would then flow to a groundwater discharge field. So what's shown here, as I mentioned, is it's concept level, so you can get a feel for, you know,
Yeah, I really, really don't care.
In underground tanks, but the location on the parcel itself, you know, the location of the tanks and the building on the parcel itself, it, you know, it can be rearranged and will likely, you know, be adjusted during the design progresses. But this figure shows you the building as, as well as the tanks, the gravity piping, the force main. Like I said, so you can, you know, get a feel for what this would look like. And Rich, there you go. So citing the discharge field, we looked for another town-owned property to develop an approximate location. However, again, this is the location of the field. It's still approximate because additional field testing will be required in order to determine, you know, the exact appropriate location as well as sizing for the field. So field testing would include soil sampling as well as, you know, sampling to determine the elevation of the groundwater in a hydrogeologic model. Additional coordination with various town entities as well as regulatory authorities would also be required as we'd further this design. So if you want to go to the next slide, Rich. So the properties that we were looking at for if future discharge fields are shown here in that blue hatching area, and it's focusing in on the school fields. So the treated wastewater would flow from the treatment plant that was shown at the fire station. And it would flow through a force main down Main Street. It would cut across the old town hall property and then go under the railroad and then discharge to a field someplace located within this hatched area. Again, location and sizing would be finalized based on the soil evaluations and hydro geo modeling that would be required. I'm gonna go to the next slide, Rich. So that's basically a summary of the proposed plan. He is collecting flows from the properties that were in the, that were shaded in blue on the first map, flowing by gravity down Main Street to a plant located at the fire station property and then discharging to a field to be located bottom over near the school. So next, I can pass it off to Rich and you can kind of summarize a little bit on the outreach efforts that we've done.
Sure. Thank you, Olivia.
Rich, I have a question.
Sure.
Olivia, are you, can you, the, the page that has the gallon flow per day, are you, are you, that doesn't include what I'm doing for future expansion, does it?
If you want to go back to that, I guess, I don't.
I thought somewhere it said like 3,400 for the Duncan.
Yeah, so, so John, what what Olivia and Rosemary would like and myself is that you can, you know, take, give us the gallons that you're thinking about so that they can then go back and take an update flows for the projected area, so.
Is, is Dan Merrick on the call? I'm not sure. I don't see him. Because mine alone would probably triple this.
So just, just to add in, this is Rosemary from Woodward and Kern. That was one of the primary reasons to reach out to the business owners. We did a build-out just based on what exists there now. The reason to reach out was exactly what you're asking, John. To find out what your business plans, does anybody else have plans for expansion? Because we need to build on those flows in order to determine technology, size, and location, just what Olivia's been explaining.
Yeah, exactly. You know, we're, my brother and I, we're looking to do like an entire strip plaza with, with like commercial on the bottom floor and then like retail, I'm sorry, residential on the second floor. So that's going to probably at least triple that number that you're, that you're showing.
So those are plans that you need to get to Rich as soon as, and so that we can incorporate them into this.
Yeah, we've done that. We have, we have like preliminary, so we, we did preliminary plans per like a septic design. But now that we might be going sewer, that's kind of a different, different game changer.
Okay.
So, thanks, John. That's actually a pretty good segue. So one of the things that we we did was we had a property owner meeting on February 11th to the properties that were shown in blue. Go over the similar presentation that we had tonight, talking about this, the wastewater study. And then, and John's point is, is one of the things that we need to do towards the next step is to have the property owners get back to us with their development proposals, if they have more tangible ideas and flows, that way Woodward and Kern can then take that information and, and bring it through the the design process to get us to closer to where, where we need to be relative to the overall size of the system. The, the first, the, the parcels in blue, there's a total amount of 14 that identified in blue. Three of them are actually MBTA parking lots that we didn't assign a sewer flow towards. But the idea is that the outreach was, was part of this process that when we first, we started the B1 study a couple of years ago, we had, as part of it, we had an outreach meeting with property owners back in the summer of 19. And we, the discussion at that particular time was, was zoning, but it was also other things that the property owners felt could help them with development, redevelopment, and potential constraints. And one of the things that was brought up was actually the availability of sewer. So from that point, we then, through my office, applied to get money through the state to do this study to take a look at doing the sewer expansion, the feasibility, how it could be done and so forth, because it was identified as a need. At the time, when the study, when we met in the summer, so it was actually just a need based on existing zoning. It wasn't, it wasn't even necessarily contemplated from the, the future potential zoning, if it was enacted or not. So that's where we, we landed here today. This is a, this effort is really coming up through the property owners. It's, it was identified as a need. The property owners are a key piece of this that to let the town boards and committees know that this is a need for them and they would like to pursue it further because the, this effort is really geared towards them. It's not as if we're necessarily saying you need to put sewer in. If this is identified need, then their support to try to move this forward is really critical. And not only that, we need, right now, we did have three members that, and John was one of them from 134 Main Street. Mr. Passini's, I know I saw he's on for his Rockwood Road property, and then Mr. Rosieri has 148, I think, Main Street. So all three of them, at least initially, said at the meeting on the 11th that, you know, sewer could potentially benefit to them. But obviously, there's a, there's a few pieces to that puzzle, and we're trying to work our way through that puzzle. And one of them, actually, at some point down the line, as we kind of move forward, will be a cost of it. So we did, we did talk about that as well. The, what, how we've looked at this project from a, from a funding standpoint, it's really essentially two sources of funding. It would be through a betterment process as well as seeking grant funds from the state to help offset the cost to build a sewer through, through the grant. And so, you know, depending upon, you know, the interest and potential development, those will play a part in where we go or don't go. And so, again, tonight is, this, this being is for, for the broader audience, the public town itself, to kind of learn more about the study. But the effort is really, is focused, it's a property owner-focused effort. It's not, you know, they, development can happen without sewer. But as some of the property owners, and hopefully, I know John will hopefully chime in about, you know, the challenges trying to develop, redevelop without sewer, could talk about that a little later. And why this becomes a piece of the puzzle. It's not necessarily to create greater density. In some cases, it's actually the ability to have more flexibility on site design and planning and redevelopment. So as opposed to trying to do expansion, redevelopment with onsite septic system on the property, the advantage of having the sewer can allow for more flexible development as opposed to trying to, you know, have an existing building, maybe renovate it, expand it, and deal with septic all at the same time on a site. So that's really kind of the backdrop to why the sewer becomes a little bit more critical to some of these, these properties that we've looked at, at least in this first phase of it. I'm going to turn it back over to Olivia to talk about this next slide, which is the cost. And you can touch on those pieces of it, please.
Thanks, Rich. Yeah, so in that meeting with the property owners, one of the main questions that came up is what's it going to cost me and what's it going to cost? So, you know, we put together a total project cost for the proposed concept. And you can see that this ranges between 4.7 million to 7.1 million. And the reasoning for this range is, you know, we're still working through various alternatives within the concept. For example, can we put the gravity pipes, you know, behind the properties along the railroad instead of within Main Street in efforts to minimize pavement restoration costs? You know, costs will also vary on the total projected flows. So coordinating with property owners on what their development plans are and what the flows are. And, you know, then in, in result, how big of a plant do we need to design? All these things will affect the total cost. This range that you see here, this is, you know, all in total project cost. So engineering design, permitting, bidding, construction costs for the treatment plant, the field, the collection system, force main, pavement, all of the above, as well as construction fee services. And if you want to go to the next slide, Rich. So a lot of considerations, you know, we'll have to go into the cost estimate before we can finalize and come up with a, you know, total cost estimate for this project. Additional items that need to be further considered when looking at these costs and items that impact the costs are, you know, are the property's flow estimates appropriate? As John just pointed out, for his property, what we were assuming, it wasn't correct. He, he has plans, you know, that would result in larger flow. So we'll want to, you know, start these conversations and continue these conversations to, you know, really understand what property owners' plans are and how they want a development, because that total flow amount will then, you know, impact the costs and the sizing of the infrastructure. Additional things that impact the costs are related to the design. So for example, additional testing that needs to be needed. The hydro geo testing will, you know, tell us about the conditions of the soils under the proposed discharge field. And for example, if soils aren't adequate and you have to bring in fill, that, that increases costs. Additional things that would impact the costs are potential grants, as Rich mentioned. So, you know, the idea would be to get as many grants as possible, but looking at, does, does the town qualify for these? And does this project qualify? And what's the timing of the grants? And then also looking at just how, how the town plans on recovering, you know, these capital costs. So there's a lot that goes into it. So that 4.7 to 7.1 that was shown on the last slide, that's, that's our best estimate of this, at this time. You know, for this concept level, that's the range that we're in. And, you know, as we get further along, we're, we're hoping to, you know, kind of, obviously, keep costs down. But, you know, narrow that down and finalize that as design goes down. We'll go to the next slide, Rich.
Rich, if I could jump in real quick for a clarification question. This is, this is Aaron. This cost that we're talking about, this range from four to $7 million is for a 22,000 gallon per day plant? That's, I mean, roughly what we're talking, that's where these numbers are being based on?
Yeah, so we use 25 for, you know, round numbers for now. And that's, that's for the plant itself, but then, you know, pipes and things like that would be sized for growth in the future.
Growth to what?
So we wouldn't be designing a plant for a growth, but we would design the plant so that we could expand it in the future. So nothing would be built. So yes, to answer your question, that, that cost is for 25,000 gallon per day plant.
And the, the potential future expansion is to what number?
That we don't know that yet. It's just looking for a plant and designing it so it has the ability to expand as needed in the future.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in and just talk about some funding sources. And these are typical funding programs through the state used for sewer projects of this type. And it, the very first pro, program that we look at is the State Revolving Fund, which is, the acronym is SRF. You may have heard of that. That is probably the largest program that we use to fund municipal sewer, water, stormwater projects. And it is a low-interest loan. It's a 2% loan. It can be financed for 20. And they've just expanded it in the last couple of years to go 30 years. That helps keep costs down when you do capital cost recovery. It, applications are due in August of each year, and it's what's called a revolving fund. So as municipalities pay off, new loans can be made. The other program that we would look at is the Mass Works Grant Program. And that is, it's a very, very highly competitive program. And that is, it's a very, very highly competitive program. But when you're doing a project, a wastewater project like this that's in the center of town, it qual- it will qualify for that because of economic development, housing. And I believe job creation is always a big qualifier, but I think it's going to be even more important during this period of COVID. So that's something that we would look at to try to uh, get a grant awarded that would offset some of the uh, total costs. There are miscellaneous state programs that come out during the year. There's an efficiency grant program. There's some smaller rolling application uh, grant programs from the state. There, to be honest, there aren't a lot of grant programs for sewer jobs. But Wooded and Kern has a whole independent uh, funding department and we're constantly on the lookout for all our clients, whatever grant programs uh, qualify, uh, we would look at. The other thing that we would look at as a capital cost recovery and no decisions have been made um, by the town on how they're going to recover costs. But one program that's typically used by a lot of municipalities is through the use of a sewer betterment with, which is um, under Mass General Laws, Chapter eighty and eighty-three. That would be a whole process for the town to determine how they want to recover capital costs. For example, if this project were to move forward and the town borrowed the money for construction from the State Revolving Fund Program, it wants to look at a capital cost recovery. How is it going to recover the costs so that it can pay back the loan when it gets called? Typically, a municipality starts out with an interim loan, which is at zero percent interest. Once that loan reaches about fifty percent of the use, it's typically converted into a permanent loan. Once it gets converted into a permanent loan, there are semi-annual paybacks that the town would have to make to the state. So we would want to make sure that we had a program instituted in place for the town to have the uh, needed revenue to pay that loan back. So betterments are a um, complex project. It's, there's methodologies to determine. And then there are ways to, for property owners, depending on how it's assessed, the town can take those betterments back and it's paid back two times a year, typically on the third and fourth quarter tax bills. So there's a lot of things in play, not only just with the technical portions of this project, but we're looking at the peripheral services and what needs to be in place where, if the town were to move forward.
And I'll uh, I'll just start and then I'll segue over to Olivia. So this, this slide, it, it says next steps. And in terms of next steps, this would be where essentially everything lines up, where there's continued support, momentum between property owners, town officials and so forth. If we started with go, this, this timeline schedule and the, and the pieces of the puzzle are outlined here and I'll have Olivia talk through, but this just gives you kind of a snapshot of what's involved in the timeframes in order to make everything work.
Yes, so assuming that, like Rich said, there was a consensus, you know, to move forward with this plan and the concept was supported and, supported and we were, you know, ready to go, this would be um, you know, a, a schedule that we would follow. Um, so a- as Rosemary had mentioned, the SRF, the State Revolving Funds, um, their project evaluation forms are due in August. So that would be, you know, um, a hard deadline. We would submit a project evaluation form then. And then um, we would need to get going on design, design. So we assumed, you know, the town would appropriate the money um, in the fall um, for the engineering design. The State Revolving Fund, then um, they develop what they call their intended use plan. So basically, um, a list of the projects that are going to be funded, that comes out in January. So that would come out in January, we'd continue on design um, in early twenty-two. And then in April, we'd submit a expression of interest um, form for the Mass Works Grant. With the Mass Works Grant, before you submit your application, you have to um, have a project that's almost at a hundred percent design. Um, so that once, you know, if you get approved um, for the grant, you can basically get going. Um, so that's why we'd continue the design throughout, um, you know, the first half of twenty-two. Um, and then the Mass Works Grants, um, the Mass Works Applications um, are due in June. Kind of skipped a step because before you can submit the Mass Works Application and then before you can accept the SRF loan, um, the town would have to um, appropriate the funds, basically approving, approving the money that would be needed um, if these, if the Mass Works um, you know, application was accepted. So they'd have um, Springtown Meeting, the money would be appropriated, um, Mass Works Application due in June. And then the SRF, the actual um, you know, the actual loan application for the SRF project isn't due till October. However, since we'd be, you know, moving forward with the Mass Works at the same time, um, we show this, you know, being submitted anytime before October. So that would all um, get submitted and then um, assuming the Mass Works Grant gets approved, um, we would be able to bid the project early twenty twenty-three and then um, get going with construction. That's um, you know, as I mentioned, the schedule, if, if, you know, we were to move forward today. And that's, that's basically that. And then the next slide, Rich, is just, I think, questions. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Quick question. Um, if you go back to the project plan, I'm not sure what's entailed in the ground studies. Um, but I would assume that you would need information from those studies in order to support the design phase. So tho- those would have to happen around January, February, March. Would you be impeded any by the snow or ice or frozen ground in order to get the information you need to support a design phase?
So are you saying um, for like the hydro geo sampling, for the soil sampling as well?
Yeah, exactly.
Geotech that's needed. Um, yeah, so um, we, we could get going on that. A- as soon as, you know, the, the money was available, we have projects that are, you know, in design right now and we have geotech going out. So as long as snow's not on the ground and they can get out there, they can do the work. So that, that wouldn't be kind of anything that would hold up the design.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to, I know uh, Gary, I see Gary and Walter and so go to, just before uh, Walter asked a question. I, I do want to say, uh, just to let people know. So the grant that we have currently through the Housing Choice Program that I talked about, there is, there is a piece to it from the, the scope of the, the work to do some work towards design as well with the existing money that we already have with the grant. So if there was, you know, again, the consensus to kind of move forward, some work could happen within, you know, with the next couple of months. Because that grant has to be completed by June of twenty twenty-one. So there might be some stuff that will happen within the next few months. Walter?
Yeah, uh, let's see, am I, yeah, okay. Uh, a couple of questions. Uh, when we started down this road, uh, we recognized that the current plant was only about fifty percent utilized and that we had allocations for the remaining fifty percent. We were going to explore uh, with those uh, allocation owners, whether they were willing to give up any of that. Did, how did that go, Rich? Or are we convinced that they want to retain all of their, their allocation for future development or um, what? I got a couple of other questions, but that's the first.
So the conclusion thus far is that the um, I guess the intertwinedness of those existing agreements between all those um, parties within the reservations that we essentially weren't going to get anywhere with them. We're, we actually uh, struggled to make them pay sometimes what they already owed to be paid. So um, it seemed to be at that point, so far the analysis was as a non-starter to be able to do it because they have been paying in for that, that system and now um, to try to then go after um, to get into that system, it was just was, was kind of, it was just a two-plex, complex of a puzzle to try to unravel, unfortunately.
All right, um, then uh, the next point is uh, pretty obvious to all of us, I'm sure. If there are eleven potential properties um, that uh, could benefit from, from a town center sewer, um, within that blue area, uh, we have an indication from three of them as to the fact that they might be interested if the costs were right, et cetera. And perhaps one or two others uh, could give us a thumbs up or thumbs down. What's the plan to get the remaining um, uh, property owners to indicate thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yeah, so the next step, um, we did talk about in February eleventh, which is, is still a, an option as part of this. It's the one-on-one meetings with the property owners to specifically reach out to each one of them. And to get a, a specific response for them, either I'm not interested or I am interested in what that is. And essentially go down through that list and check the box. Yes, no, and what it is to come up with where we stand as far as who might be interested or not.
Right. And, and what's the, the, the target timeline to get all that done?
So I think we at least try to target to have that done by the beginning of April.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thanks. Uh, my next and last question is for uh, uh, the Woodward and Karen folks. Uh, in your experience uh, with doing these projects in various towns, what do you think the ratio is going to be between the grant money and betterment uh, money to pull this off? Let's pick seven million, just discuss, as a discussion point. If, if you uh, put your, your crystal ball on, turn it on, uh, what do you think, how's that ratio going to break out?
I guess I'll speak to that. Um, it really depends, Walter, and it depends on a lot of things. It depends on the competition that typical year. Thing is, I can tell you that in the instance of a Mass Works Grant, what I have done with previous clients, it's not just get a grant application, we fill it out, send the information and send it in. We work with your state senators, your state representatives. We get as much legislative help to try to leverage Norfolk in this. Um, we have worked with lobbyists in the past. These grants are so difficult to come by. It's not a process where you can, like I said before, just put together the grant information. You may have everything there, you may have qualifiers. You are going to need political help and that is something that we have done for most of our clients in the past. I just finished a project. It was a um, twelve million dollar project. We got a two and a half million dollar Mass Works Grant. We had another project where it was a treatment facility, very similar in size to this. It was a few years back and that got a three million dollar grant. So it, it, it's a political process. As much as you don't want to say that, it definitely is a political process in Massachusetts.
Well, e- uh, accepting that, um, it sounds like uh, if you were able to get twenty, thirty percent of, of the cost of a project through grant, you'd be doing very well.
Right. I think what we'd do is, once you're looking at the build-out flows, and again, these flows were derived using calculations, looking at the existing properties as they sit now. If it's a vacant property, you overlay zoning and, and you do some calculations to figure what would be the highest and best.
Sure.
As we finitely define this in talking to, like John said, John's got some business plans for his property. Once we get to this, the point where we can more finitely define these flows and look at a treatment facility and the associated infrastructure and, and get closer to cost, we can better kind of extrapolate off of that where we think a grant, we're going to look at a grant to try to back into this to look at affordable costs for these property owners. So that's the, that's the main goal.
Right, thank you.
Gary?
Uh, yeah, I have two questions. Um, one would be around um, the limits around capacity. So if we said there's three elements, one being the field, the other being the uh, the treatment plant and the pipes, the third being the pipes that connect. And so, great, we oversize the pipes right from the start. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering if there's an ultimate limitation. It sounds like we can still further build out the, the treatment plant. Maybe we can make it double its size, but I, in both cases, it seems like we're limited by the, the footprint, the real estate that's available, whether it's behind the fire station or I think it was shown over near the school uh, for the field itself. At some point, is there a maximum that you could get to um, regardless? Because we're just going to be land-bound once again. Did that occur in your calculations?
Um, yeah, so there, there would definitely be a maximum that you could get to. So when we were looking at expandability, we were looking for a property that, you know, had room on the site. If we, we could estimate, estimate the size of the treatment plant, like what size it would need to be to serve these twenty-two thousand gallons per day. So if, if we doubled that, so basically doubled that flow, could we fit that plant on that site? With the site that we chose, yes, we can do that. Same with the field. Um, you know, we looked for a field that, you know, or an area that would have, you know, plenty of room. The issue with the existing field is, um, I don't know if you've seen, but up at the top of Meeting House where that existing field is, there's townhouses all around it. So there's just literally no place to expand it. So there's definitely a limitation, but both, both the discharge field site and the um, fire station would have the ability to basically double our flows.
So we're, we would say twice capacity of what you currently have, but even tonight, the need went up uh, just in conversation, uh, because all the calculations were based on current use. So when we get actual or projected use, we might not still have that two X capacity. And that might also drive up the cost that we've already looked at tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, it, increasing the capacity would definitely drive up the cost. Um, so that's why, you know, we definitely need to coordinate with the property owners and figure out what that, you know, sweet spot is that we're going to aim for and then see how much we would be able to expand on those properties once we have that.
Okay. Gary, if I could jump in because I have a question that's directly related to the one you just asked.
Sure. Go ahead.
Well, Olivia, the, so could we triple the capacity?
So if you go to the um, slide with the um, plant shown on it. So again, it would all depend on what we end up with for our initial, you know, design um, capacity. So right now, what's showing there are underground tanks and then a building. So the building itself wouldn't have to, in, in order to triple it, we wouldn't necessarily be, you know, it's not a one-to-one to triple the size of the building. All those tanks, we'd have to do three times the amount of tanks, most likely. Um, but then the building itself, you know, has a little lab area in it. It has, you know, um, blowers up. It's not, we wouldn't basically take that block and put three of them on there. The building wouldn't have to be three times that size, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
Let me, let me simplify my question. What's the driver in terms of what's setting the maximum? Is it, is it the treatment field? Is it?
It's the land area for either.
The land area for, well, presumably we could find property for tanks and buildings. So the, I'm guessing that the land area required for the treatment field is larger.
For the field itself, yeah.
And is there any flowability in that or, you know, like permeability or is it just a square foot number?
No, it would be related to permeability um, as well and, you know, groundwater elevations, the soil conditions. Perb- permeability of the soil, as you mentioned.
All right, so then one more question. Sorry, Gary. So if we, just I, I think we're, because I'm trying to get my head wrapped around, or I think several of us are trying to get our heads wrapped around what our options are, right? So what's a typical treatment facility? Is twenty-five thousand a pretty standard number? Is forty thousand standard? Like, are there efficiencies? And are we overpaying for twenty-five? Could we get for, for, you know, a half a million dollars more, could we get forty thousand? Is it a direct relationship in terms of? Is it a direct relationship in terms of cost or is there some sort of, you know, efficiency and scale?
Yeah, so there's definitely an efficiency and scale. It's not a linear, you know, relation gallon per cost. Because like all the engineering, things like that. For a smaller plant, we still need to do the same plans for a smaller plant versus a larger plant. So it, it's not a one to one, it's not linear. As far as what's a typical size, I don't know that I, I don't know that I can really answer that. I mean, we have clients that have, like you, you have a treatment plant that's 30,000 gallons. We also have clients that have treatment plants that are like 2.5 million gallons per day. So it just all depends on the area you're trying to serve.
Thank you, Olivia and Gary.
And I only have one other question anyway, uh, which was around, once you have what everybody's needs are or what they think their needs are, um, it seems like all the property owners would then be bound to what they asked for. And things happen with property. Uh, just tonight, John expanded his property after many years and has another plan for it and wants to build it up. Not everybody first developing their property might take that step and might want to do it at a later time. But once they provide the flow to you, um, then that's, I, I don't see how they could expand two or three times on each piece of property themselves. So are we saying that once they make an agreement, this is what we need when we develop? That's what they'll be bound to do. I guess it's might even be a question for the planning board or for Rich.
Um, let me take a crack at that. If, if, I think they've been talking about an expandable plant, Gary. And let's say that we talked to the 11 property owners and come up with a number just for discussion purposes tonight, that's 35,000 gallons. And five years from now, after the plant is built, somebody says, whoops, I want to double my, my flow. And all of a sudden that takes us to 40,000 gallons. The plant is expandable, at least it would be designed to be expandable. And the leaching field out there under the ball fields would be expandable as well. So I think we can accommodate. Whether we can get two times capacity or three times or two and a half or one and a half, it, it's undetermined at this point, but there is expandability being built into this design.
Well, I, I didn't think we would build to an exact capacity. We would have some surplus, whether that's 10, 20%. But I could, I can easily see with either the sale of properties or the change of vision that a property owner has. Who knows, regulations in the state change, anything could happen. A new need develops and, and all of a sudden there's a greater need for sewerage and but in that case, I, I would assume we're not going to have more than 20% excess capacity. Correct me if I'm wrong. I didn't think we were starting off with 2X capacity.
Well, you're right. You're, you're right. But with, with another funding effort and another construction effort, you could get more capacity if you really needed it.
I think the Gary, part of the question I need to do some research on because that part of your question is really probably more related to the betterment end of things because, you know, there is a methodology that goes into calculating what the betterment costs are, if betterments are included. And if, I don't know how that works per se, if say your, your betterment is based on X and you try to do more than that, how that works, that, that I'd have to understand a little bit better and report back to, I don't know the answer to that question. I think that was part of your question, right?
Yeah.
I think you also need to understand that if you build, we finalize these numbers in this core area and an initial plant is designed to treat, say, 25. And you have a property owner that comes and says, I'm going to expand after the fact. So you have borrowed, you have constructed your first plant, you have issued betterments based on a flow for each parcel. And a property owner comes and says, I have the opportunity, I'm going to expand by X amount. Then I think you typically would rely on that individual to pay for the upgrade. And because betterments have always already been issued, then it, it's called a privilege fee or compensatory type of fee. But there are provisions in the, it would be a betterment bylaw that the town would have to develop, pass at town meeting and accept as, as part of your local bylaw or a betterment regulation. But there are provisions for all of that, Gary.
Thank you.
Is it okay to ask a question now or is it, we still?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, if, if part of the reason for this wastewater treatment and town sewer is to encourage property owners to expand, then I guess, and I know a lot depends on changes in zoning as well, but, but wouldn't you be trying to build in excess capacity now rather than just based on the existing use? You see my question?
Yeah.
Yep, definitely. And that's why before we, you know, finalized that initial phase, that capacity that we build for, we'd want to talk to the property owners, know what their plans are for the future. Take those flows and that's what we built the plant for.
Is there some way that you could just, you know, given that it's just 11 properties, you know, based on the proposed zoning changes, is there some way to just, you know, do some sort of a calculation to come up with? You know, assuming that each of the property owners maximized the use, or is that just a number that's beyond?
I'll jump in there on Steve's question too. I, I guess I'm just jumping on everybody's coattails tonight. But I mean, the whole point of the B1 study was to try and plan for future development, right? Which is what Steve's getting at here. So I mean, I think it makes perfect sense to start to tie these numbers to the numbers in Josh's and the, and the MAPC report, right? I mean, we can, we can make up numbers and make guesses and, and do all we want, but you know, it, if we have a document that we're planning on, we may as well plan to that document and you know, those are the best numbers we have. So I would, I would encourage the, the group to, to tie some of this information to that, to, to the findings in, in that report.
So just to, yeah, just to clarify, Aaron, that's actually part of the process which they have done to get, to get to these numbers. The second part of these numbers is then the piece where the property owner says, hey, look, this is what we've projected based on those, on those studies. Are we in the ballpark and out of the ballpark? And that's, that's step two, but that they did.
I mean, maybe partially rich, right? I mean, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 properties listed. There are one, two, three, four of them are noted as mixed use. So that a majority of them are not even based on the use that we're looking at in the B1 study.
I think part of the problem is that we're looking for a finite number to understand what the total capacity is going to end up being if we built it out to the max based on the provisions that we have available. Um, I understand that and that's where I was struggling as well. Without that number, we don't know what the total capacity is, but we can't get to that number without doing the environmental studies first on the soil and permeability, et cetera. That's correct, right?
Right. The other thing is we look at these parcels with two different flows. We look at a near term, which is what exists now and we look at a build out. And what we do is we take the current zoning, we overlay that on the land area. We look at any wetlands or any other constraints to come up with a net land area to get a potential build out. And I think we've looked at these numbers a whole host of ways. One was using the B1 zoning with specifics that Rich gave us to use, whether it's 16 bedrooms per acre, whatever the B1 zoning called out. So we have all those numbers done. What do these numbers here, Olivia, reflect?
So these are a little bit of mix of everything. So we did work with Josh and MAPC and we basically, we took their numbers and we took his spreadsheet and we coordinated back and forth with him to come out with a complete ultimate build out. But then we took that and working with Rich and the town, we kind of took a step back from that because we didn't see that being something that would happen, you know, in the, I guess, near future. So that's why not all of these are shown, you know, as mixed use, like you pointed out, Aaron. Because we, we went through with the town and the town kind of indicated, you know, which, which properties we should assume for now are mixed, which we should assume are commercial.
Olivia, I think, I think the, the point to drive home here is, is that that information would be great to know, right? It would be great to have. And I mean, it would be great to have an asterisk here that says, if we were to build out to the B1 zoning, it would be a 50,000 gallon plant. Right? So that, so that we could start to, the town, the town could start to understand what their maximum investment might be over time.
Yeah, based on what we're seeing here, it feels more like this is the, just the middle of the road minimum amount that we'll need to service what we're anticipating in the next year or two. And that makes us feel uneasy because if something changes, like we saw in the meeting today, then we're already at cap, you know?
Definitely. And we can definitely, you know, we, we have that full build out number based on Josh's, you know, his full build out. We took his spreadsheet and put the flows to it. So we can definitely provide that.
Is it also possible to get the information based on the two parcels that were selected, one for the building and one for the fields? And in perfect situation, if everything was hit properly, this is what the capacity would be for those. That way we can compare those two.
Yes, we can definitely do that. I guess for the field though, before we can say how much you can discharge to the field, we would need to know the soil conditions, the groundwater elevation. So there'd have to be some.
Even if we were assuming max perfect conditions?
Y- yes, even if you were assuming perfect conditions. Yeah, because you can't overload because you're basically discharging water into the soil. So at some point, you know, there's wetlands nearby, there's different water bodies. At some point you start mounting the groundwater elevation. So you start impacting, you know, adjacent water bodies and things like that. And then as far as, you know, fully building out a plant on the fire station, that's going to come back to as well. You know, what are the plans for the redevelopment of that parcel? And what does that look like? So how much area do we actually have to work with on that parcel?
The good news there is though, we own, the town owns, you know, three or four properties between the fire station and the proposed treatment field. So there's, there's properties that could be looked at as additional area to expand on.
And that was a, a main goal in inciting these facilities is looking at town owned parcels now because that saves you in the long run from, you know, eminent domain or appraisal and purchase easements, things like that.
So if, if I might on that specific subject, if we could flip to the the district map, I have a question related to why, is there a benefit to putting such that the tanks and equipment closer to their end users or? Rich, are you driving the screen?
Yes.
Could you zoom in on? I guess the treatment field area. The upper right hand corner of this map. And I, I don't need a long detailed explanation of this question. A, a short one would work, but so and while Rich is trying to zoom in, I'll basically just south of the tracks of the proposed treatment field, there's a triangular shaped site which is owned by the town and would be difficult to develop. I mean, what's the benefit of putting this equipment on the fire station site as opposed to that triangular site?
So we chose the fire station site just because everything can flow by gravity there. And then also on the map that Rich has up right now, the purple indicates the wetland buffers. So definitely when we were looking for the groundwater discharge location, that had to be outside those purple. So that's why we didn't, you know, look at that triangular site for the discharge.
Understood on the discharge, but is there downside to putting the, the building with the pumps and things and the, and the tanks on that site?
We could potentially look at putting it on that site. Again, you'd want to be outside of the wetland buffers. So you're limited, but depending on what size plant we end up with, we could see if potentially you could put it on that site.
So what, what's the limiting factor there is, is you, you, the goal is to flow by gravity from the end users to this first pump station?
Correct, to the treatment plant. So we want to flow by gravity from the properties to the treatment plant and then from the treatment plant, no matter where it's going, we would need to pump to the discharge field.
Alright, so, so there is, there's some value to having the treatment plant closer to the end users. Understood.
Any other questions, Manny? Oh, yeah, I think so. Like I said.
Does the Old Town Hall, does the Old Town Hall facility have any potential of use here?
I think that's the field David was talking about.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about right here.
Yeah.
We did look at that and you can see on this drawing that the purple areas that look like purple clouds, those are your wetlands with your buffer.
Yep.
So it's, it's greatly restricted. And if you want to look at expand, so you're only looking at the back portion of the parcel to be able to build.
Okay.
And if you're looking for expansion possibilities, you know, that may severely limit you.
Yeah. And again, just to be clear, the site that I am talking about is actually the site behind that one that borders the tracks.
So about back here.
Right, exactly. A, a site that has no connection to a street, it's owned by the town and who knows what we would do with it. So it seems like a pretty good place to put a treatment facility and stuff. One more comment before I, I get quiet. If, again, Rich, sorry, if you could just, if you could go back to the wastewater district map, the one that shows the hatches of the areas. And just, I, I know you guys have spent a lot of time talking about what areas and what properties are the right ones that include in the district, but I mean, the, the blue, the blue hashed areas for the proposed district, one of them is, yeah. I guess the one close to the rotary, south of the road, plant south of the rotary, you know, that, those properties aren't in the B1 district. So I would, I would discourage planning for sewer treatment there that basically the properties between the town green and the fire station. And then two of the other properties north of, of the rotary are MBTA parking lots. So again, I would, you know, I don't think it's worth planning for sewer there, but I do think it's worth extending the area plan left across the tracks to two or three of the properties there, maybe all the way to the existing post office. Just my two cents on what I know has been a long and detailed conversation.
The other thing to, to remember too, Aaron, is under Mass general law, if you have a gravity sewer in the road in front of you, you have a right to hook in. So there may be parcels that were added here that were outside of the zoning because it followed the line of the sewer.
So that's a good, good clarification. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and could I ask quickly, you can't really add blue to the left of the yellow because the yellow has its own flow path to a different system. Is that correct? The existing system is yellow and green and the blue is really what we're talking about to build out.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, but you could, I guess, Gary, what I'm suggesting is I think it's 194 Main Street, right? Where we, that's the one where it was 75. You could, you could take those three properties there and essentially connect them to the, the one that's at the, the train station there, right?
Yep.
But I, but then based on what we just heard, the two properties across the street would then need to be taken into consideration as well because they would have the ability to tie into the system. So that you're, you can't, you got to be careful with your extension of the system because it, it, the volume multiplies rapidly is, I think the lesson here.
Well, one, what, just to add into this kind of planning and the sizing the system, they are, we have, they are thinking about the yellow reservation parcels that maybe they might go into a new plant and the old plant might be phased out over time too. So that, that's part of the over planning for this as well, just for people's awareness of what's going into this planning as well.
So you just added another 15 to 20 GP per day, right?
All of a sudden our future plan is 75,000 gallons. Getting close to that 2.5 million gallon one.
Yeah, we're.
Rich, that's the first time I've heard of that particular twist.
Why threw that at them?
Well, obviously that, that is sort of a, a second phase.
Correct.
Where you would, uh, invest more money to expand the plant.
The planting didn't work in order now and it has still plenty of useful life in it.
No, no, no. I meant, I meant the, the new one that we're, the one that serves the, the blue, uh, area. If we, if we design it for a certain capacity, maybe as someone suggested with a little bit of extra, maybe 10, 15% extra. And then all of a sudden we decide to put the yellow fields, yellow flows into that, we've got to expand that plant, right? Expand the, the blue plant.
Yeah, but at that point you'd have to talk about renovating the existing plant. I mean, that's like, that's a whole.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the next, that's the study for Woodward and Kern in 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, yeah.
Out of curiosity, what is the, uh, typical, um, gallon per day contingency that you build into these types of plants?
Surplus capacity you're asking?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we would typically probably do around 20%. So the permit that DEP puts together, um, for the plant, they have a stipulation in there that once you hit 80% of your plant's capacity, you need to basically start the conversation with them on how you're going to expand. Just so you never get to the point where you have more flow coming to a plant that you can treat.
Thank you.
And I think the biggest driver in any type of project like this is not so much the plant sizing, but it's looking at that groundwater discharge. Because you can have expansive land, but if that soil is rocky, hard pan till play, it's not conducive to percolating, even though you're going to have a very highly treated wastewater to go into the ground. The state still requires that you have that four foot separation before it goes into the field. So if you've got groundwater, high groundwater in any areas, um, you're going to have difficulty. If you look at the field that's up at Meeting House Road with the current plant, that's a mounded field. So they had to bring in a lot of fill to raise that discharge up above the, the natural groundwater there. So those are things that you wouldn't be able to do out on ball fields. So it, the testing, the testing to look at what are your soils, what are the perk rates? The other things that Olivia talked about, you've got wetlands nearby, you can't have breakout and flow into wetlands. You've got homes in that area. You've got a school. You have to make sure that it goes down into the ground versus horizontally where it could impact basements or things like that. So there's a lot of testing that gets done. And that testing is going to tell you what the maximum you'd be able to discharge in those school fields. That's basically going to drive the size of your plant. Unless you have additional discharge fields that you can divert flow to.
Um, what about, uh, gray water reuse? Are there any opportunities there? I mean, it's right by the school fields anyway, um, using it in the sinks for hand washing or for irrigation or anything similar to like that?
We had that conversation, um, we had that conversation a couple of times with the town. That is going to require a higher level of treatment, a different tier treatment technology that's going to drive the costs up. And I can tell you that you'd never be able to wash your hands with it. At the very best, Massachusetts could potentially allow an irrigation. We found out these ball fields don't get irrigated to begin with. So to drive the costs up with a technology on something that the town doesn't typically use, you know, we talked about, could the fire station reuse it for washing the trucks? We talked about a whole host of reuse potential. I can tell you in 30 years of doing this, there's very few reuse projects that have been implemented. They're very expensive and Mass DEP is so, so conservative. I don't think we could justify the cost of a treatment to treat it to that degree for any potential use here.
So on, on the schedule, there are the proposed next steps, where, where does this testing fall in? And those, the items that are listed there?
I think what, what Rich was saying, if we get to a point where we are now, where we can more finitely, um, identify flows, there's money in this grant, probably this spring to start doing some, some work out there.
So that's part of preliminary design or?
I, it would actually come before that. You know, and it's in order to do any type of testing, we would involve the Board of Health, we would involve Mass DEP.
That would be, that would be a great, uh, a great text block to add to this map that there's some initial testing that needs to be done to set parameters for the project.
We did look, we looked hard. The town did a wastewater study years back and we looked everywhere because these ball fields were called out in that report. And we looked everywhere to see if there had been tests done before to be able to look, at least look at records for, um, you know, how, how far down was groundwater? Where did you hit refusal? There don't seem to be any records. We went back to the original engineering company that did the tests and couldn't find anything. So we'd be basically starting from scratch here. We have, there's something called the Nat, um, NCRIS soils, which is the Department of Agriculture Soil Conservation Service to look at general soil associations, which also give you general groundwater. And the school site looks like it would be conducive. How much you would get, we wouldn't know unless we did actual testing.
Rich, you might want to talk to, uh, the rec group because I, I'm fairly certain we approved a town meeting money to put a well in for the Freeman Fields for irrigation, something you might want to do some homework on.
This is Donna Jones. I was about to say the same thing. Ann Proto has been working to get those fields irrigated. And we did approve of, of a well.
Yes. Yeah, no.
I can, I can tell you that, um, in order to irrigate the ball fields, it, it would be a process with the Mass DEP because anything that is, and again, it's very highly treated wastewater, but they typically have approved like, um, cooling drip irrigation. The tower over at Gillette Stadium was approved for toilet flushing. And that came with a lot of conversation with the state. And that was really, that was really done over at the stadium, not because of the football games, but because of the concerts.
Sorry, I, I bring, I bring up the well, not to say that maybe we do want the gray water, but to say that it's, it's something that's likely to happen in the very near future.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to the well. Um, the well is in the back corner near the basketball courts. Uh, the well was put in, uh, that part is done. We still need to pipe the whole system, but Ann was planning to do it a little piece at a time. Uh, so the first focus for the irrigation would be the fields near the basketball courts. Uh, nothing closer to the railroad tracks where we're talking about for the, uh, wastewater treatment facility now.
Okay, that would be information that's good for us to have, you know, the, the, any kind of mapping or anything that you have there.
So our, as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's the next step is the, as John mentioned, we need to just connect with his, uh, with Dan American, just to get the numbers for him as well as the other ones. It's that one-on-one outreach. Sorry, I just see all these hands. My apologies. Um, to get those flows, uh, for each of the properties identified to make sure we're on. We haven't missed anything. Um, Mike, um, so John, Donna had your hand up. Was it different question in the well, uh, or in the irrigation, Donna?
Yes. Um, when you were talking about that sort of triangle point at 100 Main Street, next to Boyd's Crossing, the, the wider part of that triangle is on Main Street. That's Old Town Hall. To the right of it is property that we own also. Um, and then you go to the left of Old Town Hall, past the garage, and that brings you to Town Pond. So I was glad to hear you're protecting the wetlands. Yes, we own it. Some of us would like the pond to be restored, but, um, I'd be glad that the town property gets used.
Thank you.
Wanted to make sure you knew that there were, makes any difference when you say go under the tracks, that there's two tracks now.
Yeah.
And could you remind me what the yellow and the red outlines are?
On the project area map, at the beginning it was a. Yep, those were the inner and outer B one district lines.
So that reddish color is the, the inner B one inner core and then the mustard color is the outer B one zone district boundary. Peter, Tyler?
Hi, thanks, Rich.
Yes.
I was wondering if you capped the flow to those 10 properties at a number? Was one question. Another question is if the sewer line passes in front of all those properties on Main Street, do they have the right to tie into it? That's the second question. And the third question is if that sewer line passes in front of those properties, are they required to pay a betterment fee from the get-go? Those three questions. So can you cap the flow to a property if John at Dunkin' Donuts is the first one to build and he wants to take 10,000 gallons, can he do it? Or is he limited to a certain number?
Yeah, Rosemary, that's.
I, well, I, I think what we would do in that case specifically for Dunkin' Donuts, if he had a plan that was getting ready to go through the planning board or whatever, that was more than what we looked at as a general build out, then those were his numbers and those are what he would be assessed charged for. If in the future he needed additional flow and there was capacity at the plant, he would pay a compensatory fee as long as that capacity existed. If, under mass general law, if a gravity sewer passes in front of a property, that property has a right to connect. The third part is if it passes, are you assessed a fee? Yes, again, that is mass general law. Mass general law says if it passes in front of your property and it's operational, you are to be assessed a betterment. You may not be required to hook in. That would be under a town regulation or bylaw, but under mass general law, you are required to pay the betterment. The betterment is recorded as a lien on the property.
But the, the, the current design has a forced main from the fire station down to the Old Town Hall property. So that's not a gravity feed line and those folks would not be entitled to tie, tie in. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, it appears that the, the outlet line goes by a couple of properties there.
Yeah, but that, that's not the gravity feed. That's the force main over to the, uh, to the leaching field.
That's the treated water. So nobody would be tying into the treated water.
Right. So from where my cursor is down here at Old Town Hall, that's treated water through a force main.
So to, to one of my questions earlier, where what's one of the, is there a benefit to putting the treatment plant closer to the, the end user properties? This would be another one because the gravity line is shorter and the, the, the number of properties that tie into it are, is lower.
Right. Mike, juicy?
Hey, Rich, thanks. Um, just a couple of quick questions. And one, is there a reason why you, um, did not include Town Hall and the library in the district? I presume the septic systems are in decent shape, but you can assume at some point in the future that won't be the case. So if it's a town sewer, it makes sense to tie in town properties.
Yeah, so we did talk about that and I guess the consensus was that between the septic system and reserve area that it didn't need to be connected. I mean, that's not.
Or if there's, you know, especially the li- in case of the library, the gravity sewer is going to be running right by it. So rather than upgrading or expanding the septic system in the future, it's going to be a lot cheaper just to tie in. And we're not talking huge flows from either side either, but properties, they should get the benefit of town facilities.
I think it's, I think it's certainly worth a little more consideration. Yeah.
A couple of things. One is, I mean, if, if I understand this correctly, the line is going to run right by the library. So by right, they would have the ability to tap in. So I think we need to plan for that, uh, down the road. And two is, I do think it's extremely important that we have that maximum number for, for total future build out that Josh is proposing with all the B one changes that we're making. It'd be really good to see that maximum number. And then we still reach out to all the property owners and kind of do our best analysis of what is appropriate to do now. But we need to have that upper limit number. And then we also need to, obviously through testing, we need to determine what is the capacity based upon the design. And when we're working on that design, we needed, we need to kind of phase it in, like build in. All right, phase one is what we're going to do right now to meet our capacity plus 20%. And phase two is if everything's done and everything's built out, say 10 years from now, we're going to need another, you know, double the capacity. I don't know what that number is, but it'd be nice to know that we have that, the future capacity to meet the needs of the B one district.
Are you talking about, uh, designing both phases at once in this iteration?
I would say it would be nice to know, do we have the capacity and the space for an ultimate build out? Can we do the ultimate build out? Knowing that we're not going to do the ultimate build out at this time, that would, wouldn't be, wouldn't be cost effective to do that, wouldn't make any sense. But can we do the ultimate build out? You know, is it feasible? And then we have to decide how much do we want to build now? And, and, and then I don't know what the phases are going to be. It might be, we end up doing this in, in just two phases. It might be three, it might be four. I, I don't know. Just.
You need that information to answer Peter's question too, which is, is, you know, is there a way to set a cap or a maximum?
Right. And, and so I'm not saying we're going to design all the phases. I just, I think we need to do that rough analysis. Does, with a full capacity build out for the B one district, will we have, will we be able to support a full sewer system at, for that full build out? And then maybe reserve, you know, where the buildings are, where all the infrastructure is going behind the fire department. Maybe we say, okay, we need to reserve X amount of space for the full build out. Knowing that we're only going to use, you know, half or 30% of it right now, but let's reserve that space. So we know we have it in the future.
I think that was a good, definitely a good question. Tom Gilbert?
Thank you, Rich. I, I just have one, uh, comment to make from the Port of Health side of things. And that is, um, that we do have some information about the suitability of our ball fields as leaching fields. Because for years and years, the, uh, the schools have been flowing their septic water into those areas. Because for years and years, the, the schools have been flowing their septic water into those areas. So the one thing we might want to think about is what, where are those leaching fields we already have in the ball fields? And make sure we're not invading that space for this new much larger system. And after that, the only question I guess I have is. Are you thinking then that you want to have the system big enough to even accommodate? The yellow and green portions sometime in the future when the. The system at the top of the hill, for whatever reason. Is no longer working. Because if you do that, all of a sudden, these numbers get very large. And all the issues around what is the maximum capacity? And if we're talking about the ball fields, you know, water mounding, that kind of thing. Really begin to become important. So just something to keep in the back of our minds.
Thank you.
Definitely be important to have that information, Tom, on the leach fields.
Yep, and I, I coordinated with Betsy and she sent me that, so I have, and we have, Rosemary, we looked at. For the school, we, we have the information on their leach field and same with for the existing fire station. We look to see, you know, where their existing field is and she provided that information to us.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just two quick things, one on the school and. Olivia just answered it, the school septic system is not on the same parcel that they're looking at for the discharge field. The other one in, you know, I'm all, I'm all for this, if it helps, you know, grow our commercial base, if that's the intent of this, but. Just concerned about the overall economics, if we're talking. We say 11 or 12 parcels of those, you know, one is the fire station, that's always going to be the fire station. One is the federated church site, that's always going to be the federated church. The bank is always going to be the bank, but as Aaron said, a couple of those parcels are MDT parking lots and they're. Probably always going to be MDT parking lots, so you're down to less than 10 properties to support a $5 million dollar project. And I just see a real issue there with the economics of that working out. If there's a way it can work, then it's been great, but I think concerns like that.
We do agree. Part of trying to pay this help. Any other? Questions? I think we have a lot of homework to do after tonight, for sure, a lot of good questions to answer, to come back to. And have kind of a next. Step question, or not step, but more of a next step plan, how to coordinate this and bring it out. Answer the questions and have a. An updated. Approach or, excuse me, not approach, but. Kind of answer those questions and then have another discussion about this, what we, what those findings are and where we are at that point to then. Get us to either. Move the dial forward or it needs more study or it's not, it's just not. Feasible for whatever those reasons might be.
Hey, Rich, this, this is Chad. Is there anything, we have a planning board meeting in a couple of weeks, so is there anything that we are going to need to discuss at our meeting and vote on? In a couple of weeks? I, I can't think of anything, I just wanted to put it out there, if there's anything, it sounds like you do have the grant, there's some money left in the grant that. That you can move forward with some of these things that won't require us to, to vote on, but I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, so as I. No, there really isn't anything related.
Okay.
Just say that there's only, I think, you know, one of the questions that we posed and maybe, you know, was earlier in the slide. Was. Actually, go back to this one here, so.
You're looking, Rich, I do want to say that we did look at Town Hall and the library when we started and those flows are very small. And I think it was, was understood that at some point in the future, either one of them needed sewer. Somebody mentioned that the potential new gravity sewer would go right in front of the library. But it really depends on where their pipes are now, if the pipes are coming out the back towards Meeting House Road. There is the potential that the library could hook into the existing Meeting House Road facility as well, the flows were, were minimal on both those buildings.
Yeah, so, no, good point. This is a slide I want to just go back to, so the top, these top two bullets was. You know, one of the things that we talked about on the February 11th, me and the property owners was. You know, looking at existing zoning and as well as. The new zoning. And if there was comparatively. You know, was the sewer. I think the presumption would be if, you know, if you have challenges, would develop and redevelop on the existing zoning, there's probably no way you're going to be able to develop under. Any higher density proposed zoning, we've asked that question, the properties to kind of think that through. To help provide answers to those questions. So that, that's part of the next. That's going to be part of that outreach to the properties, and we do have, and we can compare them against some of the build out. Again, that Olivia said that Josh, we, they have been working with Josh as far as some of those build out numbers. Goes.
Rich, I'm going to follow on Chad's question to continue my theme for the evening. I, I think it would be beneficial at the next planning board meeting to have a, a, a summary of the next steps for this, this study. You know, to have, to let the team, where we're in current, gather their thoughts on this meeting. And talk to you folks at the town and then just sort of present a, you know, a quick, a, a quick summary of. Based on the feedback we received, this is, this is where we think we should go next, I, I think that would be helpful.
I think that's a good idea, it sounds to me also like we're looking at a, an early April. Next update when the outreach to the remaining property owners has been accomplished and. The calculations have been done and we've got a, a couple of columns here that says, here's the max, here's what we're currently planning on, et cetera, et cetera. For, for another review with a group like this, maybe even prior to the April. Planning board meeting or certainly right thereafter. Does that seem reasonable, Rich, in terms of a timetable?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a very good timeframe to do it, to target either the meetings on the 13th or maybe there's. To another meeting the week prior to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And I, I do agree, Darren, that's a really good idea to have kind of a summary of after this decompressing, after the feedback and next steps to. Report back to the board on the ninth.
Could, could I ask quickly, not that it's a major issue now, I, I didn't never really heard the cascade of funding. I only heard potential grants, I think it's like four slides down from where you are, that might. Total 15% of what it actually costs, how, where does all the funding come from? You apply for these grants, you know, we heard $2 million, $3 million out of a $12 million project. But where does, where's the rest of the money come from?
So that, I think what I explained is the State Revolving Fund, SRF.
Yep.
Would be, they can loan towns money, the State Revolving Fund is 80% federal money with a 20% match. And it, it's called the Clean Water Project, which is a wastewater and the drinking water, so this program funds drinking water. Wastewater and stormwater for municipalities across country.
So it would, it would be the complete funding if we needed it, they would fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's the 2% loan.
That's a loan, yeah, right.
It's a 2% loan, sometimes it depends on what the market rates are. But most projects that I work on, the large, large projects. Are funded through the State Revolving Fund. They have 2%, it's, you start off with an interim loan that is 0%. So if, if this was to go through and you started, you know, just say in June. You have an interim loan, you, you work through the Mass, Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, Mass D E P with it. You pay two times a year, January and, and July on a permanent loan, but you typically start off with an interim loan. Which is a 0% interest rate. And most of my projects are probably a year on an interim loan and then it goes over to a permanent loan. At that point, you want to be able to have some revenue coming in, so it's pretty close to the end of your project. When you've assessed betterments or you've decided some sort of capital cost recovery, so there's a lot of coordination. That goes into that.
And, and that's typical, towns will borrow 10, $20 million at 2% to fund a sewer system.
Sure, what, what I'll do is I will send Rich the calendar year 22 intended use plan that just came out now on this project. And it's a competitive loan program. And I, I can't remember what the total amount is borrowed, but I'll send Rich a copy of the intended use plan, you can see all the cities and towns. What the loans are, what they borrowed for, and it will give you an idea of what that program is. So he can, he'll have that, he can circulate that to the whole group.
Okay, so just looking at $10 million for 20 years at 2%, it's about $50,000 a month. And, and so that gets translated back into an increase in taxes, is that typical as well?
No, because the town has to decide on what is the capital cost recovery, is it 100% betterment? Which you're asking your users to pay, is it? 80% betterment and 20% on the tax rate, none of those decisions have been made. So what we're looking at and trying to estimate costs, and I said we're backing out of kind of an affordability. Probably an average betterment that we're seeing now in projects. Is between 25 and 30,000 per equivalent residential unit. All of this has to be worked out, you know, we're not there yet. But try, and trying to back out of that, but it's a decision that the town has to make, how do we recover these capital costs? And, and you know, there's been no discussion yet, I just finished a project where it was 80% betterment. 20% on the general tax rate, the project before that was 96% betterment, 4% on the tax rate. So it can be any combination. You cannot assess a betterment to a municipal or a state property. So when you look at this area, the fire station would not be assessed. A betterment, a lot of towns instead of that, they will do a general tax contribution instead of a betterment. So there's a lot of decisions that still need to be made until you get to that point.
Okay, thank you.
One other quick question. Rich, when you reach out to the other property owners over the next several weeks. To determine, you know, the interest and whatnot, is there any, you know, magic number, because you know, given you're only limited to 10 or 11. That would even potentially be subject to the betterments. Is there some number that you're looking at to even see if this is feasible and, and if someone, for example, says no? Does it fall on the other existing property owners or? Or, 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 or is just going to be assessed if it moves forward no matter what?
Let's see, so part, the, the first part of it would be, you know, right. So we've essentially identified 11 right now, just for discussion purposes, if. You know, there's four out of 11, we're probably not moving the dial, if there's seven out of 11, eight out of 11. We would then go back to the ones who, you know, weren't. Supportive of the idea to explain it, because as I understand it, if we, if it goes forward and then betterment assessed on your property, it's not. It's not necessarily you opt in or opt out, it's really, the front end of this is just more the feasibility. From the property owners to see if it makes sense, we don't want to be trying to force on a betterment for a sewer if there's only, you know. There's less than a majority or a super majority amount of property owners that want to go forward with it. Hopefully that.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, I think we, if there was any other questions, we've got a to-do list, which is. Present a summary to the planning board. For the March 9th meeting, we can. As part of the meeting, we, we could circle back on some of the numbers that were developed previously as far as build out goes and. Provide that to the board as well and we'll. I'll, I'll circle back with Woodward and Kern and put something together, present it to the board and everyone else. At that meeting, then we'll, again, we'll start the outreach, continue the outreach to the property owners from this point forward. I really do appreciate everybody's time, some really good questions and. I thank you and I think that probably concludes the presentation for tonight, Walter?
Right, thank you, Rich, and, and thank you, Woodward and Kern. And thank you all for participating, and if you have further questions, please direct them to, to Rich and. We'll try to get them addressed. So with that, let us adjourn this, this planning board meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Alright, Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned, thank you very much, folks.